They're good, believe me, they're good. And I would make sure that I would actually take you as your board. I'm gonna make sure.
Oh, look at Rockland, I can't understand you. I'll give you a target.
Like these newspapers, Don kicks there in the rear end.
Right? Get out of here. All right, well, I'm just showing seven. I don't know if that's true, I don't show.
For six fifty-nine.
There it is.
All right, we're gonna call this council meeting over. Will all please stand and say the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome you to our Winthrop council meeting. I'm great to see everybody here. I always love the fact that we have community involvement. I would like to say, please excuse me for missing the last couple of meetings. The last one, I did have back surgery that morning, so I'm pretty sure I wouldn't have been any good. I've been a little loopy here that night, and I'm not sure what decisions I would have made or wouldn't have made. So, thank you to Julie for standing in for me. And also, Julie just had a wonderful celebration this weekend as well. Her daughter got married, so she's a little sluggish tonight, you'll know why. She's been very, very busy the past couple of months. So, we're gonna open this up with a public forum, and anyone that would like to speak, please raise your hand, I'll call on you, and you can come up and come on, take the front seat here, and we'll give you three minutes. Now, I understand in our public forums, because these are just brought on us at this time, we can't really discuss anything or make any decisions, but if we deem that we need to bring these to a committee and discuss it further, we'll be more than happy to do that. But in all fairness for those who aren't in attendance, we cannot make decisions on things brought to us at the public forum. So, go ahead.
All right. My name is Jen Isaac, and I live directly right across from the park. Today, I'm here just to speak as support for a potential splash pad. I have a young daughter, and we go to splash pads in neighboring communities. We go to New Ulm a couple of times throughout the year. We also have been to Jackson's splash pad, and I know you have seen a picture of that. We go to Jordan's splash pad. We also go to Gaylord's splash pad, or...
Pool.
Pool. Thank you. I think it would be such an asset to have a splash pad in our town. If we can keep people in our town, it would be just something for growth, and I really, really like that. Also, as a teacher, I just think about the gross molder skills that all individuals can continue to harness and develop, as well as fine molder skills. I just think that it would be a great way to unite people of all ages, because that is something where, oh, Grandma and Grandpa, they're coming on over for a celebration. Hey, let's bring everybody over to the splash pad, and let's just have a good, tight community. I think this is something that we really need. I also think it would be just a draw from other communities as well, and it's just a positive asset to just bring to our beautiful park and wonderful town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Ray?
No.
Come on up.
I'm Ray with the Lions. We have discussed, and we brought to do the portable stage unit.
Okay, for the park pavilion?
Yes. Instead of building one, we want to do a portable one.
Wonderful. Yeah, we'll get, we're gonna work with you guys on that. We want to have another park meeting then, and we'll discuss. I know there may be some options as to some accessories and amenities on the stage, and even maybe the size. So, we'll get together with you and the park committee. Michael will get that together and inform you guys, so you can come to the next meeting, and we'll hopefully get that put before the next council.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. That was fast.
Ray, does it work better at night for you, or do you ask?
Yes, I'm a night person.
Okay. Come on up.
I am Kylie Messner. I am coming here today on behalf of Transit Trailblazers Forge Club. I'm here to discuss the hospital donation of a memorial bench at the Winthrop City Park and seek your valuable insight on this matter. We like to build the values that we believe in the Forge, and our Forge values, build it in the community that we have. We were recently gifted a donation in memorial, or as memorial in regards to a donor to our club from Darlene Becky. In a way to give back, we'd like to put a bench in the park, or as possible as the splash pad, that's, you know, as a possibility. We feel that it would help with, you know, the area and build the park as in general. So, I don't know. That's something that, you know, the club would like to bring and would like to grow in the park and possibly the Forge.
So, the Forge Club would like to donate a bench?
Correct.
And someone's memory to the park?
Right.
We are discussing, didn't we discuss things about, we've got a master plan of the types of benches that we want to put in the park? So, if you work with Michael on that, and then, Michael, you inform me here, do we need a resolution then at the next council meeting to accept that?
We're gonna have to accept it as a donation.
Okay, but then that ways, he can let you know. Are you planning to donate the money, or donate the bench, or?
Well, we would like to see it go towards the possibility of the splash pad.
Right.
And, but we'd like to know either way, if it's gonna go either to the splash pad or to the park, either if it's a long-term goal that we can bring to it, or just add a piece to the park in memory of her and Transit Trailblazers.
Yep, yep.
So, either, you know, part of that donation, and then the club contribute part of it, but that is something that the kids had voted on at the meeting to beautify the park and to give back, so.
Okay, all right. Yeah, if you will, just reach out with Michael. Michael, you two get together, and you guys can coordinate that. Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Kylie.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Come on up, Doug.
Sorry? Hello, I'm Doug Gunther. I need, according to your clerk, I was inquiring about the last year's budget and this year's budget, and he told me that he's not allowed to get that information out, because unless the council agreed to, I didn't understand that.
We don't, is, what information did you need?
I just need a list of all the budget items that were paid last year, and what's proposed new increases are. You got a truth and taxation meeting next month?
Yes, yep.
And I'm trying to do a little research.
Yep.
And...
I see accounted in you, yes.
Yes. And I'd like to think the information, but I was, I went down to your office down there, and they told me unless the council agrees to it, you can't tell me nothing.
We don't have, well, that information of what we approved last year is public record, so you can get that. We haven't yet finalized our proposal for next year's budget. So, we don't have that yet in a form to give you, because we've not made that decision. We did have a preliminary that came in at, what was it?
Twelve.
Eleven, twelve, fourteen percent, I forgot what it was. We've already trimmed from that. But you can indeed get the information and the spreadsheet of all the department layouts and everything for last year's adopted budget that we're currently in right now, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I was, like I said, I was told that I can't, unless the council agrees it, I'm not allowed that information.
No, that is...
And that confused me a lot.
Yep, no, I'm glad you came then, because I'm glad we could settle that. We still have, like I said, though, we still have a meeting coming up to finalize what is going to be at the, did we say end of November, or is it December for truth and taxation?
End of November for truth and taxation.
The end of November meeting, council meeting night, right? Before the council meeting, will be the truth and taxation meeting.
At seven P M.
At seven. So, is that something, Michael, then, once we, once we put that together, that it's available for anyone to have?
I wasn't aware that you wanted copies. We discussed it, I was with you in the lobby.
Yeah, I know, discussing that as well, when I left, I was totally confused, because you told me that the council had to approve it, I was like, the council gotta approve it?
Right, I just told you that the council hasn't approved the budget yet.
That we haven't approved one for next year yet, so...
You can have copies of it, I can send you, I can email them to you right now if you prefer, so.
It's Douglas T. Gunther, gmail dot com.
T?
Yes.
Z L R T.
T.
And then G W E N T H E R.
Yep, at Gmail.
Gmail dot com.
I can send those to you right after the meeting.
I appreciate, thank you.
Yeah? Is that it?
That's all I got.
All right, good to see you, Doug. Anyone else? Yes, come on up. Hey, it's not a competition.
Hi, I'm often known as a class clown, so just give me a minute to try to write things in here.
All right.
My name's Heather Slickers. I've lived in town for eighteen years. I've been a very silent observer, and I am passionate about what I'm seeing right now with this splash pad. I'm seeing it online. I don't have kids of my own. I have no skin in this game besides wanting more people to want to come to this community. I mean, we're trying to build a school. Why wouldn't we want to have reasons for families to come to this community? I think it's a fantastic idea. I've seen the research they've done. I've asked questions myself about water usage, things like that, and it was just something that I'm so passionate about. I've never been to a city council meeting. I don't know most of the people here. A few of you know me, but this is just something that I felt passionate enough about bringing to this community, that I wanted to come and share my voice as well. And that's really about all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Heather, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
And yes, come on up.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Beer said, I live at Gaylord, the next town over. I was at a splash pad with my youngest boys, I'm a mom, just this last fall, when it was still at kind of ninety degrees, kind of a last, blast of summer, and it's super fun. I feel like it was better than even like the Gaylord pool, because you don't have to worry about drowning and kind of, you know, the puddle jumper kind of age. So, again, I am an advocate, love having to pay exercise classes that we host sometimes here, so thanks for letting us use your space. And yes, I would bring my boys if you had a splash pad in Winthrop. Thanks.
Great, well, welcome to Winthrop tonight, and we do have building lots and a couple of small houses available, so you could just walk, you wouldn't have to try to put this splash pad.
Maybe, yeah, maybe you could use a splash pad.
I always gotta put that place, so, you know, that's my duty. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
No, I don't need to come up.
Well, I need you to come up, because it's, that's okay, I'm sorry, but it, we record the meeting, so we want to make sure everyone that may watch it at home can see. It's not gonna hurt you, it's not a hot seat or anything, so.
Oh, it's not. Well, I'm Grandma Jane, Rich Miller, a lot of them know me by Grandma Jane. I'm raising, helping raise my granddaughter, who's nine, nine years old, and Mrs. Grams had approached me about a water park and to come and support the group that has been behind that, and I'm here to support that group. Her backyard opens up to the park, and when she was small, we would go there maybe two, three, four times a day, because soon as she heard kids' voices off, we would go to the park. So, I believe that water park is worth to put some funds together, or some, you know, dinners in support of it, to raise some money. I know the group is willing to put something like that on, and it just would be worthwhile. I do have to say that one of the first questions I had when I got approached about that is, how, when was the last update that was done to the children's park? And it was in the nineteen nineties. That's thirty years ago, so I believe there are lots of new equipment. We go a lot to the Glencoe Swimming Pool, there's a beautiful park there, that has a lot of new type of playground equipment that is enjoyed by many, and daycare people go there all the time to that park. And I believe our park too as well, daycare uses. So, I do believe that it would be worth looking into and budgeting for in the near future. The last couple summers have been super hot, and I know we had a lot of water fights in the lawns, so to speak, so I'm in support of, of the water park.
If we could only capture all the snow we get in the winter, and that would power our, plenty of water for the water park, right?
There you go.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you so much, Jane. Yes, come on up.
Hello.
Hey there.
I'm Emily Arstol. I run an in-home daycare in town. I rely a lot on walking. I do not transport the children by vehicle, so we do park visits, we go to, we go for walks. I think a splash pad would be ideal for safety purposes versus a pool, just a place to take my daycare kiddos, because of the fact I don't go out of town. We, and like she said, the updates of the park, we could use something newer. The kids love it when we have park days, so I'm advocating for a splash pad.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Yes, sir. Come on in. Yes.
Good evening.
Hi there.
I'm Dwayne Peary, and we live south of town. We've been here for over thirty years. First of all, I would like to applaud the people in the community that are trying to stay cohesive. We, anybody that's my age or older certainly knows and sees how things have changed in Winthrop. It's a lot different than when we moved here, you know, thirty-plus years ago. Again, and I was asked, well, what would it bring, what would it bring for me to the community? And I still think that, as someone else said, the cohesiveness of young people wanting to be in Winthrop, of going to the splash pad, I just, I think that's a, it's a great idea. And I applaud everybody that's trying to keep Winthrop going, so.
Thank you. Appreciate the positive thoughts, thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else?
Come on up and identify yourself.
I am C. Rodiard. I am, my heart is just racing, because all of these people showed up, and they are speaking a lot more openly and excitedly about all of this. But really, what we wanted tonight, we know that we had the parks meeting, we had the work session, we have answers to the questions from the last work session that you guys had for us, so we were wondering if we could either get added tonight and we could share that information, or if we could have another work session and share the information about the flow-through and the recirculation.
We do want to have another work session, I talked to Michael about that just today, and we do want to have that, because I think the park board discussed bringing this decision to the whole council, so as a council, we can have a work session on that again. So, we'll work with Michael to get that set up and get that out for you guys, so we can get together again. Hey, one question, though. With your position, if you want to identify for the camera, for everybody else in here, in case they don't know what your position is and the community is, because I have a follow-up question.
Oh, yeah, I am the director at the Lodge of Winthrop.
Okay, is there any opportunity that, I'm just curious, because we had talked about that, I don't know, this is really an open meeting, but it's just a question, just for you to identify to, is there any need that your population and your facility would, the splash pad do anything for them?
Ultimately, we are too far away in crossing over the railroad tracks.
So, you don't have the transport?
We don't have transportation, however, we can take trailblazer transit during the day. We don't necessarily have the need for the splash pad and any enjoyment that it would be, because so far, it's just transportation is the issue. However, I have talked to several residents in the Lodge, and they think to go forward with it, and if the council would like, I could definitely do a letter of approval or a letter of encouragement from the Lodge.
Well, I guess what I was getting at, it's therapeutic for all ages and all abilities.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, we've done all the research on the ADA approval too, and making sure that all of...
So, there'd be a ramp or something for people, wheelchairs?
Well, it would be accessible with a wheelchair, with an ADA-approved pathway to...
Yeah, there's no stairs in a splash pad, and there's no standing.
But there's no...
In coin?
No.
No way to get up on?
There's nothing for them to get up on, just any of the, yeah, any of the people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome, well, thank you.
One thing also, if the splash pad goes through, and Kelsey's elderly residents, people bring their kids to the splash pad, they come and visit their family.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Kelsey. Anyone else? Loretta, come on up.
I just have to say something.
Yep, come on up, that's fine.
Okay, I'm Loretta Stutzman. I've lived in this town for a long time, over fifty years, and when my kids were little, we did go to the park, and we loved going to the park. And once in a while, we went to Gaylord to the pool, and my grandkids, when they come, we'd go over to Gaylord to the pool. And my problem isn't the splash pad. I think it's wonderful that the young people of town want a splash pad. That's great, that's great. But what are all the other projects that we have ahead of time? May I ask, what's happened with the Second Street project? You know, we hear about it at the beginning of the summer. Has anything happened with that? The ambulance barn, or the fire barn? We do have things going on with the police barn, but there's just so many other things that have come before the splash pad. And right now, we have a lot of vocal voices from the young people who can get out and speak. People like me, and who are on a limited income, are not able to get out in the evening. We're not able to voice our opinions. So, please consider all the people on fixed incomes who cannot afford to have a splash pad in the, put added on to our taxes, the Second Street addition, the new ambulance barn, the new fire barn, you know, all these things. But why don't we do the things that we talked about first? I remember when I started coming to the meetings, hearing about the Second Street addition. I don't hear much about it. I know we bought a couple of buildings, but did we destroy them this summer, or get going on this project? That's where we should be pushing the project set we started in the past, we should progress with them, and then, the splash pad is really at the end of all these other pads. When we get to them, then deal with that. And please let us know as taxpayers, what this is gonna cost us.
Yep. Oh, everything is out there for cost, yes, everything will be out there, it would have to be, and that's what we discuss in the council meeting, so yes, thank you, Loretta. Just a quick note, yes, the Second Street project is going on, as if you can imagine, it's three, how many thousand feet is it that we're talking about? Twenty-five hundred feet?
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred feet. So, it does take quite a bit of time for engineering and stuff. We will be letting bids on that coming up pretty soon for that construction to start, and it's not an addition, it's redoing Second Street and the infrastructure, as far as the other ones you mentioned, the fire barn and stuff like that, all that's being engineered, it's being worked on too. We got a pretty talented council up here, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So, yes, we do have a lot of things in the pipeline, a lot of things are in different stages that we're working on, but if we don't start talking about the splash pad, or the pavilion, or a stage, or something like that for the Lions, or then who's next? We're gonna be sitting around saying, okay, we have twenty projects we need to do, but we've not planned for any of them. So, we do plan, and we do, they do progress, and they do progress over time. So, they are all doing, still work on, and they are all in progress. So, anyone else? Okay, yes.
Hey, welcome. My name is Mitchell, I live in Winthrop. So, I've been to a couple of meetings recently, and observed Counselor Schmidt state that we need to save taxpayer dollars, when it comes to growth to the city of Winthrop. Okay, so I requested public documents regarding the grocery store, and I learned that Counselor's husband, Counselor Schmidt's husband owes the city of Winthrop seventy-one thousand dollars, seventy-one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents. How can you in good faith sit in your position and continue to say we need to save the taxpayers' money when you and your husband owes seventy-one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents? I can't, so, I request that the city council conduct a full and thorough investigation of this matter. I don't see how Counselor Schmidt can sit on the council while her husband owes the seventy-one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents. Also, I would like to know why nothing has been completed on the two-hundred, two thousand and eight comprehensive park plan, and also the newest twenty-twenty-two park plan. There hasn't been anything done with them. That's concerning, especially when it comes to inflation always going on. So, inflation does not go down, and action needs to be taken to improve our city. You know, for the pavilion, for instance, in twenty-twenty, the cost was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, a hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the most recent bid in twenty-three is now two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, because we keep sitting here and not accomplishing anything, okay? Not doing anything is hurting our community more than the stuff that's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell. Anyone else? Yes, I saw an arm, I couldn't see who it was attached to, so.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Kelly Lebkin from Fairfax, and I just want to say that I'm in support of the splash pad. I know that my family and many other families from Fairfax and that direction would use it. I think it is a good thing for small communities to invest in. You're not only investing in your community and the young people, but there are a lot of elderly that have grandchildren that come and visit, and also think about your businesses, the return on investment, people that come to town shop in town as well, so best of luck to you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We want to keep the open public forum, but we do need to get on to our business meeting as well, but I want to make sure everyone gets a speak. Mark, come on up.
It might be addressed in the three open letters, or could you share those first?
What three open letters?
The three of support, I mean.
Three supporters.
I was giving others to the council. Yeah, I was gonna read those after everyone here had a chance to speak.
Yep. Has everyone spoken? Wanted to speak, or you want to address the council, come on up.
Mark Sandelman, seven oh three North Enopan Street, sorry about that, I've got a little inner ear issue.
No problem.
And my equilibrium was on, so.
Are you moving? Yes, I will be moving soon, yes. To where? That's none of your business, Mark.
I've heard Florida, I've heard Arizona.
That's not public display.
You are the mayor of the city, and you are not even gonna be living here, and you're helping make decisions about what's coming up in the future. When are you moving?
None of your business. That's a personal matter, that's not public information.
You just told this community you're moving. We have a right to know, you're an elected official.
No. President Trump made decisions that would affect the following, the year after he left presidency, knowing full well that he wasn't. Why is that any difference for me, Mark? You have, you have politicians that make decisions that are gonna follow. I'm trying to make decisions that are gonna better Winthrop whether I'm here or not. That was never a decision about anything that I need to be here, or if I'm gonna stay here for the next twenty years.
Reaching into the social security widow's pocketbooks and taking money out of their persons.
Okay, Mark, that's, yeah, I appreciate it.
It's not in your...
Your time is up, thank you.
I think I get three minutes.
Your time's up.
I don't know why you can't tell us?
Yeah, we're open for public discussion on things that matter with the cities, but personal vendettas against individuals, we're not gonna tolerate.
You're out of order.
So... You are out of order. I was about to address that as well. We appreciate...
I don't know why you can't tell us.
Yeah, we're open for public discussion on things that matter with the cities, but personal vendettas against individuals, we're not gonna tolerate.
You're out of order.
So.
You are out of order.
I was about to address that as well. We appreciate public input for projects that are going on, but honestly, it's not the place for backbiting, spitefulness, and personal vendettas against anyone. Period. So we're gonna, is there anyone else here that would like to speak in an open public forum regarding matters in front of the city?
Possible to ask a follow-up question?
No, it's not on the business agenda.
No, I'm sorry, Heather. Yeah. All right, we're gonna move on to the.
Mr. Mayor, I do have three letters.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. This was from Tracy Kerr.
Yeah, yeah.
Here, sorry. Hello, I just wanted to send a letter of support for the idea of Winthrop getting a splash pad. I have been a resident from the city of Winthrop for over twenty years. I'm a business owner and have raised my two kids in the town. I currently own and run Daisy Learning Center, which is a licensed in-home family daycare in Winthrop. I love Winthrop. It's a peaceful, quiet, safe town to raise a family and own a business. My daycare is very active, especially in the summer months. We love to take the local public transportation, Trailblazer, to nearby towns to visit parks, libraries, and pools. We do first utilize our own park and the library in Winthrop, but to be honest, the park is definitely in need of updating, especially compared to the other neighboring towns we visit. My kids love our pool days when we go to visit Gaylord Pool. However, my anxiety level is high when I try to watch and keep ten to twelve kids safe there. I've always said that the splash pad would be so much easier and less stressful with big groups of kids. Unfortunately, Trailblazer doesn't travel to any nearby county that has a, yeah, county that has a splash pad. I've talked to other daycare providers within Sibley County who have used Trailblazer and the majority have said that they utilize a splash pad in Winthrop. Splash pads are safer, yet still provide the kids a fun way to play in the water and stay cool in the hot Minnesota summer days. I feel the committee heading this effort has put in the work and the research and also coming up with a way, a few ways to raise money, whether through grants or fundraisers. I would be more than happy to help with fundraising efforts. As a business owner and homeowner, I understand how tax increases can be difficult. But I honestly believe that the committee is doing everything they can to prevent that from happening. Thank you for hearing from the demographic of people that this would benefit. I appreciate your time. I also have one from Ruth Bauer. As a real, excuse me, as a real Winthrop community member, the email is to acknowledge my support for a proposed splash pad, inclusive playground equipment, walking path, and updated restrooms in Winthrop's park. This would be a great addition to the park for people of all ages. There is a great crew initiating that I know will do a great job fundraising for it. What a great addition it would be for the city of Winthrop. With the last name, Kelsey.
Gorgal.
Gorgal? Thank you. To whom am I concerned, I'm ready to show my support for making updates in the Winthrop park by updating playground equipment to accommodate children of all abilities and create a splash pad. I was born and raised in Winthrop and my parents and siblings all reside there as well. I moved away for a few years, but my small-town roots brought me back. I now reside in Gaylord with my family and own a home daycare. It was a small, it was a small-town appealing and community in support that drew me back to the area. I wanted to live and raise a family in a community that I grew up in. Growing up in a community that supported one another and felt safe is where I wanted to raise my kids. As a kid growing up in Winthrop, we were always at the park, riding around town on our bikes or being outside with our friends. I feel as though that it's important to continue these childhood memories and provide kids with the opportunity to get outside and be kids and explore. Kids learn best through play. As an early childhood educator, I see the importance of this every single day. I believe that offering an updated city park where children can explore and play will bring our community together to hold these memories and children will learn to love and want to stay or return to our small town. As a daycare provider, as we use Trailblazer Transit to explore other towns and opportunities and parks they have to offer, we have always enjoyed visiting local pools. As a daycare provider, it's a bit of a challenge from safety perspective, which is why I love the idea of a splash pad. Much more safe and you don't have to depend on people operating it on a daily basis. Also creating a space for children of different abilities would be wonderful to see. I've seen too often children who feel as though they are not welcome on certain playgrounds due to the structure of the playground. I hope that we can rally together as a county to make the needed updates to provide our children with opportunities to explore and play. I will continue to show my support for this group. We're committed to keep our small town a special place on the map. I wanna hear people say, we loved exploring Winthrop and visiting their downtown for a nice meal. Let's keep the small town alive.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. This is establishment of the current agenda. Attorney Walton, do you have any additions?
No.
Jenny, any additions?
I do. I wanted to know why the splash pad information wasn't on this agenda 'cause I watched the city council meeting from last month and Julie said they're gonna put it on the October council meeting.
We had a park committee meeting and there were some questions, as I think Kelsey alluded to, that we still have answers out there for. So we do wanna have a work session and bring it to the full council.
So we'll have a work session and then it'll be on the next.
Yes. That is my intent, yes.
Yeah, and I really didn't have anything actionable for the council this upcoming month on that. I know that.
The last month's council meeting.
Yeah, and I think that was kind of our intent.
So nothing to add though, really?
Nope.
Okay. Pete, do you have any additions? Julie?
No.
Megan? Don? Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and add Resolution twenty-three dash zero three two. I included it in your packet. It's the last page of the packet. It's approving Logan Anderson as interim police chief in Given. Given and Winthrop have been trying to fix this for the last couple twenty days. And I apologize that it wasn't on the regular agenda. The resolution, as we'll talk about later, is really about us supporting Given and helping them in their time of transition.
So do we need a motion to suspend the rules and then allow that and then establish a motion to establish the agenda?
Establish the agenda.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow this new business five point nine?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor. Motion's been made by Jenny, seconded by Julie, all those in favor suspending the rules to add five point nine to new business, the resolution approving Logan as the interim police chief, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And like, side opposed. And ayes have it, motion carries. Now we'll establish that's the current agenda. Is there a motion to approve the current agenda? So Pete and Jenny seconded, all those in favor of this current agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And like, side opposed. Okay, motion carries. Now the consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to look at the meetings from the minutes from the last meeting and the financials. Are there any questions from the council? If I have any questions on any of that, any questions or corrections? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Don, motion. Jenny seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Like, side opposed. Motion carries. New business five point one, feline ordinance discussion. Michael?
Yeah, council, the last month or so, there's been movement within Winthrop to add an ordinance about felines, about cats, loose cats on the street. I will tell you, I researched a lot with the League of Minnesota Cities. I've researched other cities that have the ordinance and actually contacted them. I know there's a lot of information in your packet. I actually did print it off in the one tonight 'cause it was like sixty pages long. But basically, they said, yes, we can definitely regulate it by ordinance, but the real problem comes with actually enforcing it. You know, what do you do with all the cats once you have them? Most of our shelters are already full or at capacity and don't have the necessary equipment to even help with them. Other cities have done things like they have to be on a leash or be tethered to some kind of pole or mechanism. That's great, but then when that doesn't happen, who enforces it? Well, it'd have to be our police department, right? Because they're the ones that enforce ordinances. And it's really difficult sometimes to figure out who the cat belongs to, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. We would also have to treat them just like dogs, so we would have to have up-to-date and current vaccinations, which would get very difficult. You know, just for instance, you know, some people have a five or six cats, keeping them all straight and getting their tags. It just becomes very cumbersome. So I guess I put this agenda item on because I wanna know what way you want me to go. Do you want me to continue to work on the feral cat issue? Do you think that this is not something that council wants to entertain? Or, you know, which, I guess, way do you want me to go with this? Those are the big takeaways that I learned is that it's hard to enforce. It's terribly costly to regulate just because, you know, this is about, we have to have more dog tags and we'd have to figure out a listing system. And now if anyone's had a dog recently, sometimes that is really cumbersome. It's kinda jumbled. So I guess, you know, from the cities that have this regulation, it is very rarely enforced. When it is, it's usually during hoarding situations where they have an excess amount of cats. So.
This isn't the first time the council has talked about this.
What's the ordinance on dogs? There's no amount of dogs that you have.
There actually technically is not an ordinance that gives a specific amount of dogs.
I thought there was and that at some point, then you had to, you would have to do a kennel license.
No.
No. My neighbor next door has five or six dogs. There's, and I believe in the past, they've been there and there's no amount. There should be an amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, normally it's past three, then you have to get your kennel license.
But this cat thing, feral cats in Winthrop, nobody owns them.
Yeah.
And they just roam the city and.
As a cat owner, put a tag on them and put a collar on them. We should do it when they're small. It'll never happen. I mean, they have those breakaway ones.
But like you said earlier, if you're a good cat owner.
Yeah, I've had cats all my life. If you feed them, they stay right on their yard.
These feral cats are nobody's cat.
But you gotta have them fixed and you gotta have them. My fear of the feral cats is the leukemia that gets spread because that, that's vicious. And if you don't have their leukemia shots, you're gonna get in trouble.
I think my concern about it, and I've had a cat all my life, my current cat never goes out of the house. Because I've had cats that did and one of them decided to taste, I think it was antifreeze, and that was the end of that. But I, my concern is the law enforcement officers because that's gonna be a difficult job. And we ask a lot of them already. I don't, I worry about them, you know, getting the phone call, somebody sees a cat roaming in their backyard and they're supposed to go track down the cat and find it. And I'm not sure how well we can enforce it. I know I did a little research too, and most of the cities that actually do enforce it, they have animal control officers, which, you know.
But then you also run the risk where, again, it's a little easier to collar and tag a dog with a collar and leash than it is a cat. So you pick up someone, a cat that you think is feral, but it's actually someone's cat, you take it to the shelter, they euthanize it, then you got, you know, an upset child or something. I get it, cats are a little harder to control. Like I said a minute ago, this was discussed. I think Steve Johnson was mayor at the time when this was discussed. And a lot of it was because of the fact of it's just, it's the important, we could pass it and say, yep, we're gonna do it, but it's the enforcement. You're gonna have our officers running across people's lawns in the middle of the night chasing feral cats. We'd love to do something with it, but I don't know that it's actually enforceable.
I just don't know this practical. And I hate to have, make ordinances that are difficult or impossible to enforce.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that a consensus of the council to proceed or not to proceed then? I don't wanna speak for the council to not proceed. Okay. Budget conversion, five point two.
Yeah, so I really think that, you know, we have talked a lot about the budget this year because we did a lot to it. I really wanted to go through what I would say are enterprise funds or our utility funds 'cause we haven't spent a whole lot of time on them. And so I'm gonna bring up this spreadsheet 'cause it's just so much easier to read than this. But, you know, we have a few of the roll-up accounts and and we brought it up last time and I just wanted to go through them again real quick. And then, of course, we can go to any category that council wishes. As I said, it's kind of an open discussion about the budget. I know we've been, we've been through it multiple, multiple times. But I wanted to go through the anticipated revenues when it comes to our enterprise funds. So right now, you know, our water, sewer, garbage, and electric, it looks fine and dandy, right? Like we're making just gamebusters. Just remember that this, these are the funds that actually pay for our bonds. So the enterprise funds do a majority of our bond funding. And as we see increased rates for previous or future projects, you know, these funds are gonna have to be healthy in order to continue to fund projects in the future. I did this roll up the council. It's a lot easier to see, you know. We, right now, the garbage, just so everyone is really clear, the garbage isn't a full amount. We also have a waste bill that we pay, which is about twenty-five thousand dollars. So garbage is not making money. It just looks like it because we haven't paid that bill yet. Electrical, we did do the correction last month. The electric, I will tell you that fund in general comparatively to towns our size with MMPA, Olivia, Arlington, our revenue is about three hundred thousand dollars less than theirs and we actually have more consumption. So what is scary about electrical, and I know Pete, I don't know where, oh, he's right there. He's behind Jenny. Electrical is one of those things where, you know, we have a responsibility to the public to make sure that we continue to move forward with electrical. We have a lot of lines in the ground that have been there since the eighties, since the nineties, which doesn't sound too terrible. But eventually, power lines underground corrode and that's just what they do. And we're gonna have to start replacing some of those in a pretty fast manner. We also have overhead lines that have been there since the sixties and seventies that are gonna have to be replaced. So although this looks like, wow, we're making three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, that's pretty good. You know, that is barely paying our bond off and we're not making much progress on the other front, maintaining our lines, correcting really bad things that are happening in the town just because of time. And I can give you a little bit of, we have trans closures still in neighborhoods. We just replaced an elbow cabinet up by Oak Lane this past month. People are asking about the expense of that. Yeah, it's very expensive. You know, those transformers are about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. But at the risk of not being able to replace them very quickly, because it takes about a year to order a transformer right now and get it in, it's on a fifty-six week delay. So as soon as we get them in, we have two spares and then we replace one or two a year. We have sixteen more trans closures like that that need to be replaced. So I wanted to put that in perspective. You know, Arlington and Olivia both have MPA members. They pay the exact same price as us for power. They're at about one and a half, one point five million right now, and we're only at one point three. And that is only because we did a catch-up last month from summer. So just things to think about when we go through them. If we look at our water accounts, we are doing fairly well with water. I will tell you that in the next year, because of our new system, we identified close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue non-collected based on our old system. Our new system is just far more articulate on where our biggest liabilities and hurdles are. So we're gonna see an increase in profit when we talk about water this upcoming year. A lot of them come from industrial accounts. We replaced a few water meters that are auto reads now and we're getting accurate reads. And it's alarming to see what we weren't charging. And we're also are charging our industrial customers a little bit more than we are residential, but it has not been the practice in the past.
Give me just a moment. While we're discussing this, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, the numbers we're talking about here, this money comes from the rates that everyone pays. This is not tax money. These are the rates. And what we do, let me say enterprise funds, water, sewer, electrical, and we'll also have storm sewer. The rates that we collect from you, we pay the service. And then the profit that's left over is what stays in our funds. Those are the dollar amounts that Michael was talking about. That money isn't just sitting out there. That money is what pays for Second Street, what pays for electrical. That money is what pays for Second Street, what pays for electrical upgrades, what pays for when a water main breaks. That's what that money is used for. So the system pays for itself. It's like if you went and bought a car to become a taxi, to turn it into a taxi. Well, the funds you rake in by running fares is what pays for that car and pays for its maintenance and stuff. So that's what these enterprise funds do. I just want everybody to understand, when we're talking about these few million dollars and earlier, Michael said this money goes to pay the bonds, well, we, we go out for borrowing, we borrowing when we do these large projects. So then our rates are promised toward paying those bonds off over 30 years. That's how you get things done in a community with your water, sewer, electrical rates and with your enterprise funds. I just wanted to make sure you, all were just kind of glazing over thinking, okay, what's he talking about? So I wanted to make sure you guys understood too, because I think it's very important to understand that this isn't your tax dollars. It is though, your money and it's the rates you pay for your water, sewer and electrical. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. As you can see, expenditures did go up this year in this fund and that is primarily due to us needing to replace one of the filters in the water plant. The filters have done a really great job. One of them is 20 years old, the other one's 15-ish. When the health department and the EPA inspected the water plant, if everyone remembers, our manganese levels were really high and this new filter next year will help get rid of some of that problem. It'll help filter the water a lot better. But otherwise, our total water fund, when we, when we actually balance it, it's much, much healthier than it was the year before. That's really small. Let's blow it up for Pete. No. He didn't even have a comeback.
I've got one when you're done.
As long as you do.
He's not gonna finish now, he's worried.
So our sewer fund kind of has the same exact reaction as our water fund. So when we find things that were not correct, especially when it comes to an industrial customer, it very much impacts how much revenue we're gonna get. So you're gonna see an increase in revenue next year in the sewer fund. Again, most of those are commercial customers and you're gonna see a net positive of about 73,000 versus 50,000 as we did this year. Electrical is the one that I really wanted to focus on. I had a really interesting conversation with MMUA. I know that as, as you're aware, I kind of went out and took MMUA to the carpet because I was really confused about, you know, why, why are we paying almost $10,000 a year and what is that giving us? How do we gain from being part of MMUA? So this is a longer discussion, but I wanted to shorten it up by these three points. So MMUA has a training program, right? And they train people to become linemen. That conversation I completely understood and was very aware of when he came to. The problem is, is that to become a lineman in the state of Minnesota, I guess how many hours you have to work underneath another lineman?
A lot.
8,000 hours. So there is no way, there is no way that we will ever benefit from this program going the same way we are going right now. So eventually council, we're gonna have to make some decisions, really tough decisions. Either we're gonna hire a lineman so that everyone in Winthrop that is on staff right now can become a lineman, or we're gonna have to send Troy and Chris away for like three years. That, it's, it's just the most bizarre thing ever.
You might want to talk to Amy about that.
So I did.
She might, she might be in favor.
She'll be fine. She'll be fine. My, my real, my real pushback for a lot of that is that, you know, we have an electric fund that is basically the crutch of making sure that the bonds get paid, right? So the electric makes us the most money to pay for the bonds. And right now, it, it would not be able to withstand hiring a lineman. I mean, linemen make an excessive amount of money. But I also think that we have the opposite problem that, you know, we've promised the public works people that, yeah, you can become a lineman under Winthrop. Well, those are kind of based on false pretenses. There's, there is just, I don't see any route where they would ever get caught up and we'd be able to send them out for 8,000 hours. I mean, there's just, I mean, that's, it's, that is almost impossible. So we're still working with MMUA. I'm not gonna pay our dues this next year. I don't see the point of it. We can get training from OSHA online. They have training programs, they'll get the same amount and we'll save 10 to 20,000. Right now, I, I just, you know, Troy and I have talked about this quite a bit, but we just don't see the benefit in really being part of MMUA, especially under those conditions. Does it mean that we're gonna have to hire a lineman eventually? Yes, that's what Fairfax did. And so when MMUA says, we're really successful, check these other towns out, what happens in Wells, Minnesota and Fairfax, Minnesota is that they hired a lineman. They spent $180,000 a year to hire a lineman so that their other people would have the training. So people like HMH is who actually has been doing most of the work in Winthrop. They've been the ones that Troy and Chris and Tommy have actually been working under. They come from Sleepy Eye. They've actually replaced all the transformers and helped us rewire and really did a lot of the, the heavy lifting, I would say. I think we're, right now, we're better off giving them more money and more, get, get more time than we are in MMUA.
Can we contract?
We have a simple training contract with them right now, but I, I think we should really dig in and see what else is possible. And so when we look at general utilities for electric, we'll, right now with the rates that we have, we'll hit about 1.4 million. And in revenue, it'll cost us about 1.3 right now. If you do the quick math on that, we're gonna come almost even after bond payments next year in electric. And again, it really just, it really comes down to what professional services we're using, how many transformers we have to replace. You know, if DFA's transformer, three-phase transformer goes out, we have to replace it or else they don't operate. And I think that's just something to keep in mind when we're talking about electric and Pete will tell you more than anyone. You know, we have an obligation. This isn't, we don't get to call Excel Energy and tell them to come fix the line. There are lines, there are responsibility. It's, it's both a, a great thing and a curse all at the same time, because obviously our electric helps really pave the way for a lot of our improvements within the town. So those are the enterprise funds, but again, I'll go over any budget item that you want if you want to go through line by line and in any other department.
Well, we're gonna have a work session. Our work sessions are posted, so if anyone would like to come and listen to see what we are talking about in the budget, it's not interactive, we're just gonna have a work session amongst the council. So you, but you're certainly welcome to come to those and see what we're talking about and what we're looking to do with next year's budget, so.
And right now, our budget is at 7.14%. So council has, you know, really trimmed off about 6% of the budget that was proposed.
I think this was really helpful information. I think it's good to start the discussion.
I'd just like, just like to say, history of the electrical department in the city of Winthrop is very interesting. I got on it in 92. In 92, every time the wind blew, we had no power. People were calling up, microwave was bad, stoves were bad, televisions were blowing out, all kinds of crap. At that time, we had a proposal, and I'll try to cut this short, to sell it for a million dollars. And the council at that time said, no. We hired a man by the name of Paul Cady. Paul Cady came in and he said, you know what, people? There is no way in hell you are ever gonna fix this power situation. If you don't, just take a section at a time, section at a time, section at a time. And that's how we did it. We buried cable and it was never connected and it rotted because we hired people who didn't know what they were doing. So that money was thrown out the window. Then we put in the second power lines, I think it's probably the ones we've got now. And I think most of those are the, the new ones where the, the wire is not concentric, all the wire is inside, so it should last a lot longer. You know, I get uptight of all these people saying it's 20 years old, we gotta do everything all over again. I don't, I don't believe, we've had very few power outages in this town in the last 30 years. You know, and I would agree with you that our biggest problem is those cabinets where we still got some trans closures that are very dangerous. And I would agree, they've gotta be changed before somebody gets killed in there. But I also want to tell the people in the city of Winthrop, your power has been about 10 to 14% lower than anybody in the state of Minnesota. And we get every month, people coming up bitching about their electrical bill being too high. We had a healthy pot of money and what has happened to that pot of money is as things have gone more expensive, everything, people's salaries gone up, we've taken, just like, need a new fire truck? Oh, water department got money, pull it out of there. Well, I, guess what? Guess where they were pulling a lot of money out of the electrical department? And now we're down. I don't oppose increasing the rates. All the other cities do. Our power, most of it, other than salaries, to this point is, every cent we had went back to the power. We didn't take any money for streets, we didn't take any money for water, we didn't take any money for lawn mowing and all went into the electricity. Well, guess what? It isn't there anymore. And I just, you know, so when people, you like everything, talking about things going up and down and everything. We've gotta increase those rates. Absolutely. You gotta have power. But I don't like to saw this negativity of, you know, we've, we've had the free lunch for 25 or 30 years, now it's time to catch up. You know, and I don't know, how many dollars did you get out of, on people who right now can't even pay what we charge now?
Maybe 25? Last week, we were $25,000 short in payment.
In a month?
In one month.
In one month, $25, $25,000.
At what point does it get shut off?
Well, we're getting ready to get cold weather rule, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we have a, we have a process that we go through. We give them the opportunity, especially now Minnesota state statute dictates that if they had come up with a reasonable late payment plan, we have to accept it. We also send them to M-Back and some other places where they can get assistance. A lot of people don't know about that. You know, we don't, our general policy is not to just go shut them off every time they make a late payment. Our, our general, you know, duty as a public power is to make sure we keep the power on and we find a reasonable accommodation for them.
One other thing.
But that does cost the taxpayer money, Pete, you're right.
Just one other thing I'd like to say downstairs, the entryway, there's a pile of books of the MMPA. I want you to know that Sam Shaw, an old timer like me, started out without one penny of anybody's taxpayer dollars and we have built like four and five power plants? Big things, we're talking big money, we're not talking, you know, we've got windmills and solar things and it costs you people nothing out here and that's why your power was so low. And it was because people went out and bust their butts. And I get tired of listening to people complaining all the time in this story.
We did have some, some pioneers of that, that really set us up with that to belong to that group. What is it, 13 communities now?
13 communities.
13 communities that we generate our own power, that allows us to be about 10 to 15% less on our electrical rates in other surrounding communities, which in the long run, you know, the, the goal of that is to help make Winthrop more competitive for businesses. All right, moving on, 5.2, that was just information only, so moving on to 5.3, the resolution relating to polling place location for 2024 elections.
Yeah, and just one more comment on 5.2 before our next work session. If anyone wants me to pull out one of the department totals again, just let me know and we'll pull whatever you want out. The resolution 2023-028 is really about declaring, the state of Minnesota wants us to declare a polling place that has to be done before the December 6th deadline. And of course, the polling place is the fire department now. Just an FYI.
Okay, that is actionable.
Yep.
It's actionable, so we need a motion?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to agree or designate the polling place as the fire department for the 2024 elections?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jenny, seconded by Pete. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Saying still while I'm hot.
Unzip, you're coming in.
Remember, was it last year, not this present year, but last year when we had that coal spell where?
Texas froze out and stuff.
Texas froze out and all these towns like Fairfax and everything, charge your people just piles of money. We didn't charge anybody any different rate. We kept our present, we ate, the city here ate a million dollars. Just want you to know that. People don't know that, you know?
Okay, 5.4, resolution 23, 2023-029, joint powers agreement with the city of Winthrop and Gavin Law Firm.
Maybe Aaron can help explain, but these are all related to the change that's coming with our attorney.
So, yeah, I took the position up in the eighth district that I can't prosecute over here anymore, so Gavin Law was.
We're not allowing you.
I'll still be here.
I'm vetoing that.
I'll still be here, but I can't do the prosecution for the city anymore, so that Gavin Law Firm is willing to pick up that role, they're good for it, so we just do their documents that need to be approved in order to make that change.
And that's just something, because of your new employer, you're not allowed to do that for us.
Correct.
Right, yep.
And I just want to say, I really appreciate you going out ahead of all of this and getting this lined up, because that would have been a nightmare for me to try to find on my own.
I wanted to be a smooth transition.
Appreciate it.
Motion to approve, resolution 2023-029.
Motion to approve by Julie, second, and second by Dawn. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favors, aye?
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? And that motion carries. We're at 5.5, court data services subscriber amendment. Is that part of this as well?
Yeah, the next order.
5.4, 5.5 and 5.6 are all standard agreements we approve every year, or every five years, excuse me. But now we need to do them individually.
Do we need to do them individually or can we do them?
You can move them together.
All right, is there a motion to move 5.5 and 5.6 together then?
I'll make a motion.
And was there another one too?
And 5.7.
5.7, yeah, that's right.
That's data services.
5.5, 5.6, 5.7.
Okay, Jenny moved and Julie seconded that we approve those three points on the new business and is there any discussion? Any discussion? Not will vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? And motions carry. We are at 5.8, resolution 2023-031, adopting new rubbish rates.
Yeah, so I did make a table in the, in the agenda, just because I had it was easier to look at. So basically, our provider, Gaylord Sanitation, is raising their rates when it comes to fuel surcharges. So obviously, we need to do something about that, because as I showed you earlier, we really are even, we're almost not coming up even in garbage in the rubbish department. So this would move the rates from the old rate to the new rate. It's around 250 every single rate, it would bump up and that would take effect this following month in November.
And this is different on rubbish. I just want to make a point that on rubbish, this is not an enterprise fund, we don't own this, it's just a service we provide to the community, so we make no money on this. We just pass it through. We handle the administrative of collecting it and the utility bill and then we pay Gaylord Sanitation. So unfortunately, when they come to us, we have to raise the rate or, you know, the taxpayers as a whole will make up the difference. And I would rather it just be on the users because you can get different sized trashcans and stuff, so we only bill you for what you use. So that's just gonna be a pass-through.
And we did go back almost three years and it's been the same rate for quite a while. I don't think Gaylord Sanitation wanted to actually increase the rates. Unfortunately, fuel has just, has killed the business.
Is the last one through the $4.05, the math wasn't working?
Yes, that includes everything.
Okay, so how were we not able to raise the full $4.05?
We don't because we come out even this way. This is just even.
Just even.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the adoption of the new rubbish rates?
I'll move.
Dawn made the motion, is her second.
I'll second it.
And Jenny made the second. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, was there anything else?
Yes.
Morgan Anderson, that's right.
We're gonna tackle.
It's on the other page, we added it, I forgot. Thank you.
So this is the addendum to the agenda. There are copies on the, on the desk if you wanted them. Given's police chief has retired, resigned from his position, now retired. As of November first, they will be without a chief. They have approached us to have Logan do interim duties. What this resolution is asking for is for council's approval to go into contract negotiations with Given. That is being worked on in the background. We won't have to settle that until we need to, but there's gonna be a few different high level things. Number one, we're charging Logan's full wage to go over there and help them. It'll be a monthly cost participation, so we've already decided on forty-five hundred a month. They pay that to the city of Winthrop for Logan's services. So that'll cover his wage benefits, pretty much everything. We are only doing it for six months and then reevaluating. We're doing it for six months for a lot of reasons. As you know, finding a police chief, not very easy. And especially in a rural area, it's not, it makes the task even more difficult. So we're gonna give them six months and Logan's expertise to really kick jump that process. He's gonna be in charge of everything, so from evidence lockers to training police, Logan will be in charge. So what this resolution right now is approving is for us to go into contract negotiations and understanding that you will eventually sign and approve the contract and its finer details.
Do they plan on having a police department, or that's up for debate?
I think they're trying to hire a police chief first. They really wanna see if they can save their department. Between me, you, and this camera, I think that it's gonna be really difficult to find a police chief at their wage with no benefits. It's gonna be very difficult.
But this will allow them six months to, for them to be able to make that decision. And we know, like you said, it's, could be a good three months or more to actually, if they did find someone that wanted to be their chief, could take them to onboard them, three to four months. So it gives them some breathing room and we're willing to help. We reached out to them earlier this year, said we'd like to help them. But this is just the agreement to allow you to go into negotiation. The final negotiations or the final contract information will be brought back to the council for approval.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually try to sneak a police committee meeting in between council and the negotiations somehow.
So this isn't the, an approval of anything but to enter into negotiations, so.
And I'd just like to clarify, I'm sure this is true, but Logan is okay with this plan?
Yes, um, you know, our assistant chief is still out with that beautiful baby. But we do have Karen Sidney, she's currently on light duty anyway, so she's actually going to help keep both departments afloat at the same time, taking care of some of the paperwork that Cleos are responsible for. And Given is already okay, her wage being transferred over as well, so.
Okay, is there a motion to allow us to go ahead and proceed with the contract negotiations?
I make it. Motion to proceed.
Jenny made the motion, Julie seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And like, sign opposed, and the motion carries. Anything else? Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I would like to apologize. I snapped at a gentleman from the city earlier because he went after me on a personal note that is private information, that has nothing to do with taxes or taxpayers or anything. I shouldn't have done that. I noticed that he did leave. I wish he hadn't have left. I would have gladly spoken to him after the meeting, as I think any information like that should have been done anyway. I didn't handle that well, but that he brought it up, I want to make sure and let everyone know, then Mike is here with the newspaper. I unfortunately will not be serving out my full term as mayor. For the heavy heart that I have to say that because I certainly didn't enter into asking you with your trust and your vote to put me here to leave shortly after only a year of serving as mayor. The opportunity came about for us to be able to do this and we've made the decision to relocate. It was initially gonna be at the end of next year and it's been moved forward quite a bit. So my last meeting and last meeting as mayor will be February twenty-sixth. That being said, I don't make the decisions here. These wonderful people beside me make the decisions. They're the ones that vote. I'm not making any decisions and burdening anybody with anything. I'm certainly just trying to lead the meetings and let everyone speak and everyone be heard. I want us all, the gentleman Dwayne earlier, Dwayne said it earlier, I like what he said. Let's coalesce around the positive aspects of our community. All of you here tonight, whether you agree or disagree with anything that the council's doing or saying, you're at least here, and that's wonderful. That shows you still give a flip, and I love it. You don't have, we don't have to agree with each other, but we, I, I personally appreciate your passion for coming and speaking against something because it means you still care about this community. And I care about this community. I'm not trying to shove through a lot of stuff and hightail it out of town. That was never the plan. Light, if, we all know, we're all old enough. Life changes every day and my life has changed and things happen. And like I said, it's with great regret that I'm, I'm not gonna serve out my full term. I've thoroughly enjoyed this year. I thoroughly enjoy working with people that I agree with and disagree with. And I've tried my best to give everybody a voice and I'm gonna continue to do that. Again, whether they come at me personally or not. So again, I don't think I handled that well. I owe that gentleman an apology, but I do wish he, if he had a question like that that was on a personal matter, that didn't have anything to do with the city or taxes or anything, I wish he would have come to me personally. And hopefully he will. Hopefully he'll see this video. But that being said, I do love Winthrop. I've made this my home for twenty-seven years. I am committed to this community and I'm committed to this, this council. You have a wonderful council serving you. Julie is the president of the council. Hopefully she'll step right in as, as appointed mayor to serve out the term. But there's a lot of great things in this community, folks. Lot of great things. Chief, Loretta, you too. There's two great things right in this front aisle right here, come on. You guys are the trailblazers for this community and now you've got them over here, look at the, these are the next Chi-mays over here. You know? And Scott, Scott came when they planted the first tree in Win, in Eagle City. My gosh, I can't tell you. He's ne, but he's never, he's like so many of you. He never stands up and says, "Oh, look at me, look at what I did." He just doesn't. Nobody knows what you do, Chief, cause you've never said it, but you do so much for everybody. You do. Don't blush and don't, don't shy away because people that know you know this. And we've got the same over here, and there's so many like-minded people just like you in this community. So don't give in to the negativity, don't give in to the naysayers. We lose businesses, but we're not the same community we were, we were eighty years ago either. But it's the positive spirit of folks like you that show up and challenge the council and disagree with us and say, "No, we want this. No, we want this." Loretta, great question. Let's get these things done. We're getting those things done too. We can do it. We can do it all. Because we have a can-do spirit, we're tough Midwestern folks that we just don't take no for an answer. And when things push come to shove, we all jump in and roll up our sleeves, whether we agree with our neighbor or not. We're all gonna pitch in and make sure that Winthrop continues and Winthrop continues to thrive. So I'll leave you with that. I did wanna clarify that, and with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Do you wanna do committee updates?
I was wondering about that.
Sorry, I forgot.
I'm sorry, I didn't go to that.
It doesn't really matter, but. Do you wanna start?
I think we should. I jumped off going that and felt we were done.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
I just needed to get that out.
The Harland pipeline has been approved by the Commerce Department, the MPCA. They should start commencing on building permits very soon. I was part of the construction meeting, seemed like there was a lot of after the fact questions. I don't know what will come of them. A lot of things not thought about, like, is the pipeline gonna go over the drainage ditches? Cause if it is, it needs to be thirty feet away. No one thought about that apparently. So there's a lot of questions not answered during that meeting. Rev, so I know that we've touched on it just a little bit, but the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation has accepted Winthrop, Given, and Fairfax in an economic development program. We are committed for three years. It is a great program. It's worked really well in Laundsdale, Springfield, Mapleton. We are really blessed. There was a lot of competition, including our neighbor Gaylord, who did not get the grant. So Compuer Financial is actually sponsoring it this year, so there's actually more funding available to do a few more things. And, uh, uh, there was a great presence, by the way, from all three communities at a gathering last month. We represented really well. I think we took up, I'm not joking, at least two tables full of people that were energized about entrepreneurs. So we did start that program. We have a few meetings now, but the U of M is actually collecting data for us right now. It's really about entrepreneurship and economic development data that we'll use. I did have a meeting with MMUA, I've kinda touched on that already. The fruits of that labor, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with it. The K-9 fundraiser, I know Logan's not here tonight, he was busy with his own family, but the K-9 fundraiser raised over four thousand dollars worth of funding. We are still trying to calculate that out and make sure that we appropriate, do a resolution for the donations. But the two fundraisers were really, really well received in both Fairfax and in Winthrop. There's a fire and ambulance meeting for the building construction. Thursday at six P.M. So thank you to that committee, we'll be getting together. The reuse facility, I know that we don't talk about it all the time, but we are really starting to get really great data from neighboring towns. The reuse facility has really turned into a regional treatment center. MPCA, the DNR, and the Minnesota Waste Water Association are, are all behind the idea of creating a reuse facility here which will connect neighboring towns. Broughton, oh, I'm gonna forget someone.
Lafayette.
Lafayette, Given, Fairfax, Gaylord, and, um, that's it. The project total is gonna be enormous, but the great thing is, is having help from MPCA and DNR. They come with a lot of grant money because they wanna see this more than anyone. So we're still working on that. We're still gathering a lot of data, a lot of how are we gonna pay for it and how much is it gonna cost? So we're, we're working on that still. We have another meeting this week. Uh, and then Second Street, I know Loretta asked about it. So the MPCA has released the permits finally. We just did testing on the three houses. The testing has not come back yet. They test for asbestos-led contaminants, so when we tear it down, we know how to address the houses. We should be able to go up to bid next month. So we'll do full bids. I can tell you that there are five different construction companies that I've inquired about the project. A lot of that reason is because federal funding for ARP has stopped for most major cities. So cities like Mankato and Rochester, they're running out of projects to fund because they ran out of money. So they're really relying on small towns for these large projects. That's why Arlington and us, we're gonna have really good bids. We have almost the exact same project going on for both communities. That's what I have.
Was no number of the police committee streets or anything? Nothing?
They're ready for snow.
Right, no, no, said no one ever. Okay. Ed, anything?
I've been through like ten to seven.
First quarter?
No, one minute left in the second.
Oh, okay. We all know that'll change. We all know that'll change. Park Committee?
Well, we just have to schedule a meeting.
Yep, okay. Okay, that was it then. Anything else?
Electrical tomorrow.
Electrical, actually.
Tomorrow's the meeting.
Yes.
And, uh, Chuck, we'll, uh, we'll try to lower your rates, uh, build another power plant, lower your rates more so that we can charge you more on the other end, maybe more.
Cable Commission meets.
And Cable Commission is coming up. It's a meeting on Wednesday. Anything going on there that we need to know about?
We're gonna actually meet at the business center, at the school at this time.
Oh, okay.
And then, um, we're still talking about giving grants to the schools. We're working on that. See what they need.
Nice, okay. Anything else? Not, I'll, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, Dawn made the motion and Jenny seconded. Nope, no, Ray, you don't get to vote. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
And like, sign opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone so much.